Good evening. I'd like to call the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors Meeting of May 12th, 2022 to order. It is 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, quick housekeeping pieces. Supervisor Patrice Toreen is still out on maternity leave, and our Chair Laura Boyle-Nestor is on Zoom, if you see her up there. So we'll turn it over to Vince now for the announcements.
Thank you, Fran. Don't forget Tuesday, May 17th is Primary Election Day. The Montgomery County Voter Services Office website includes polling locations and ballot information. You can go to www.moncopa.org/voterservices for details. Aqua PA reports that roadwork on Ridge Pike between Manor Road and Joshua Road is expected to be completed by the end of May. A fireworks display is scheduled for May 14th at 9:00 PM at the Union League. The display is for a private event. Please take note if you have pets or members of your household who are sensitive to fireworks. Movies in the Park is finally back. Join us at Leland Park on Wednesday, May 18th for a family-friendly viewing of Disney's Encanto. The event is weather-dependent. Viewers are encouraged to bring a chair or blanket and be sure to bring bug spray. We hope to see you there. And then finally, on May 21st, the William Jeans Library is having its Wine and Cheese fundraiser from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and we hope everyone can attend.
Thanks, Vince. I'd now like to invite the White Marsh Veterans Monument Committee up with Richard Cutler, Eileen Baer, and Joe McGrath to present the Four Chaplains Legion of Honor Award.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to make this presentation. So tonight, we're making presentation to two of our committee members, one of which is seated right in front of me, Fran McCusker.
Thank you.
We're presenting the Legion of Honor Award to you tonight. And just as a background, the chapel of the Four Chaplains' story begins in February of 1943 when the United States Army Transport Vessel Dorchester, which was a converted cruise ship, was carrying over 950 members of the US Army from Newfoundland to Greenland, was in the middle of the night hit by a German U-boat, and subsequently, 230 of the over 900 soldiers survived. During the course of that event, there were four chaplains onboard. There was a Dutch preferred, a Catholic priest, a Methodist priest, and a rabbi. And while they were spending their time trying to organize and keep calm amongst all of the associated enlisted, they came to realize that there was a problem in that there weren't enough life preservers. So the four chaplains took their own life preservers and donated it to the other servicemen onboard, and then as the ship was ready to go down, put themselves right at the railing, arms locked, and continued to pray as the ship went down. Shortly thereafter, there were awards given and established in February 2nd of 1951 by President Truman here in Philadelphia, the Chapel of the Four Chaplains, which was at that time and until 2000 and so on Temple University's campus. It has been subsequently moved to Constitution Avenue down by the Navy Yard. The actual award that you're receiving tonight honors members of the public for their community service unconditionally without regard to race, religion, or creed. And now what I'd like to do is allow Eileen and Joe to do their part.
Yes. My name's Joe McGrath, and I've been on the committee of the White Marsh Veterans Monument for, I guess, 10 years. And during that 10 years, I got to know the other members. So I decided to nominate the other members. Two standing behind me right now, Dr. Cutler, Chief Baer, Chief Wheatley, Chris McCloslin, who's a fellow Marine, Charles Shepherd, Chip Shepherd, Sarah Earlbaum, who hasn't received our award yet, and of course Supervisor McCusker. We also want to thank Township Manager Rick Miller for helping us, Park and Rec Director Tom Blustrom, and personally, I can't get out without thanking Assistant Township Manager Sean. He's another Marine, so I had to give him a shout-out. But the thing is, when you nominate somebody for this award, it wasn't just for the monument. You have to go through a nomination process where you have to show multiple selfless acts on behalf of the Dominies to make the community and the country better. So it's not to be taken lightly. It's an honor. I'm personally honored every time I wear my pin, which is a Star of David with a crucifix in the middle. So with that, I just wanted to say it was my pleasure to get to know the fellow members. And I'll tell you what, I just want to say over that 10 years, in the Marine Corps, they teach you adapt, improvise, and overcome. We did a lot of adapting, improvising, to overcome and finally get that monument. And we have to thank the boards. How many boards have we gone through, three or four? So we have to, there's a lot of thanks to go around. And most of all, the citizens of White Marsh. So we're going to present Supervisor McCusker tonight, and I'll get to Supervisor, Ex-Supervisor Sarah Earlbaum. But I just wanted to name these other people that previously received a nomination and award for all the selfless acts they do.
And this is Steve Pim.
Thank you. Are you okay sure with my family? This doesn't happen all the time.
Can we just get one big yellow to Supervisor, please?
Well, thank you to the committee for awarding that, and it was great working with everybody. I learned a lot over that time period about how to adjust and overcome adversity, that's for sure. A real quick story about the monument. My dad died in October 17th, and it was just before we dedicated the monument. And we had dedicated two pavers for he and his brother. His brother was killed in Vietnam. And while he was on his deathbed, so to speak, we were able to show him the paver. And he was choked up with great joy and pride about the sacrifice he gave for this great country, and it meant so much to him. So that goes a long way when we think about what that monument means to a lot of people and a lot of families. So I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud to work with such a great team. So thank you very much. So we'll move along. All right, now I'll turn it over to J.C. for the William Jeans Memorial Library Bronze Star within the PA Forward Star Library Program.
The William Jeans Memorial Library and Nicholas and Athena Karabat Center for Learning has been awarded the Bronze Star by the PA Forward Program for Libraries. Congratulations. A little background about the PA Forward Star Program for all of you. Libraries are more than a place to conduct research or to complete assignments. They house more than shelves of books and multimedia devices. Libraries are integral parts of our societies, serving as hubs for activity and engagement, adding value to their communities. Our libraries envision a Pennsylvania where citizens know how to use online resources and current technology to improve their education, to enhance their job skills, and to fully participate in a digital society. PA Forward is an initiative of the Pennsylvania Library Association that highlights libraries' role in moving Pennsylvania forward. Libraries are key to powering progress, elevating the quality of life by fueling the types of knowledge essential to its success, like basic literacy, information literacy, civic and social literacy, health literacy, and financial literacy. In January 2017, the Pennsylvania Library Association's PA Forward Initiative launched its PA Forward Star Library Program. The PA Forward Star Library Program requires libraries to brand their programs and communications and to talk with their communities about how libraries across the Commonwealth are moving PA Forward. There are several steps to become a PA Forward Star Library, requiring libraries to submit documentation of their efforts, which is reviewed and verified by a committee of peer librarians. Those steps demonstrate that the library has incorporated the five key literacies into their programming and communication. The PA Forward Star Library Program awards Bronze, Silver, or Gold Stars to a library as it adapts and integrates the initiative's core values. The Bronze Star level demonstrates that a library has adopted the core literacy terminology and it is using that language in its communication plan. The library is making the public aware of its programming and services. The library is taking part in the training and taking advantage of the PA Forward free resources made available by the Pennsylvania Library Association. When a library displays their Bronze, Silver, or Gold Star, visitors to that library can be assured that the star has meaning. It means the library has gone through training and developed its programming to further its support of the five essential literacies outlined in the PA Forward Initiative. It also means that its programming was reviewed and verified by a committee of library peers and that those peers have recognized the quality of its programming by granting the library its star level. PA Forward is implemented on the local level. Each library decides what fuel their communities need. The initiative does not mandate any specific programs, collections, or communication methods. It provides support and contacts for the local library to develop partnerships with the subject matter experts available in their community. I would like to congratulate the volunteers of the library board, Executive Director of the library, Lisa Clancy, and her staff on this great achievement. The library continues to be an essential part of serving the community here in White Marsh Township. Congratulations, and thank you. Lisa Clancy is here, and Diane Smith-Hobin. I'd like you both to come up, and I have a plaque that I'd like to present to you.
You can display your library or your office or hang it proudly where you like.
Everybody, yep, if everybody can come in. All right, now we'll get to the more exciting things. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from April 14th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to open up the board public discussion. Review SLD #02-21. DP Spring Mill Developers LLC, 561 Spring Mill Avenue. Final plan, 19 townhouses, the transition at Spring Mill. Who goes it, Charlie?
Thank you. This is a development that I think you're probably familiar with from seeing it as a preliminary plan. The board reviewed this last November and on November 4th granted it preliminary plan approval. The final plan is completely consistent with the preliminary plan. There are no substantial differences in design or layout. The plan is on the wall, just to, on the screen rather. Just to remind you of what this is, it is a 19-unit townhouse development on two parcels, fronting on Spring Mill Avenue and East 10th Avenue. The parcels are being combined.
Charlie, can you screen share that for the Zoom audience too? I'm sorry to cut you off. I just want to make sure that they can see it as well.
Just give me one second, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, we were seeing everything. I lost sight of that. I apologize to the Zoom audience. As I was just saying, this is two parcels being combined and 19 townhouses being developed, 11 of them fronting on East 10th Avenue and the remaining eight fronting on Spring Mill Avenue, with common drive behind all 19 townhouses with access in two locations, a one-way system basically on East 10th Avenue. All have rear access to two-car garages, and all are fairly consistent in design, and I can show you what that looks like in a minute. The Planning Commission looked at this at their April 12th meeting this year, saw no specific significant issues, and at the end of their discussion unanimously recommended that the final plan be approved. And just to give you an idea, this is a concept for how they will look when built. Obviously, there's a hill on East 10th Avenue, so they're going to be stepped down. And TJ Doyle, representing the developers here, as well as other members of the development community, if you have any questions or if TJ would like to add anything to this presentation.
Thank you, I have nothing to add.
Is there any board questions? Public? All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution #2022-13, granting conditional final plan approval for SLD #02-21, DP Spring Mill Developers LLC, 561 Spring Mill Avenue for 19 townhouses known as the transition at Spring Mill?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Take care. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution #2022-14, authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funding for various 2022 capital improvement projects as approved in the 2022 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you Supervisor McCusker. What we have here is really an administrative item before you. The American Rescue Plan in White Marsh Township, we received funds in 2021, will receive funds in 2022 to the amount of $1.9 million. When we were reviewing the 2022 budget back in 2021, we identified various projects that were included in our three-year capital improvement plan that we would use ARPA, American Rescue Plan, money for. In speaking with our auditors, in order to make this really clean for future audits as well as our reporting requirements to the US Treasury, they advised that having a resolution that clearly identified the projects that would have allocations from ARPA money would be best when doing all of that reporting. So we took a resolution that was standard from PSATs. The Solicitor's Office reviewed it. It includes the projects of the Westaway Storm Sewer Project that was complete, the upgrades to this meeting room for AV, replacement windows in the admin building, two stormwater projects which are in the White Marsh Valley area of Pine Tree, Jackson Drive, as well as a new township signboard. All of these projects, again, were already approved as part of the 2022 budget. This is just administrative, so we have a clear understanding when we submit our reports to the auditor and US Treasury what those funds were allocated to.
Great. Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller?
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the notice of intent to proceed and bid approval based on a successful review of the 2022 road paving bid to Glasgow Incorporated for the total base bid amount of $1,395,077.96?
So moved.
Second.
Going to Krista?
Krista? Yes, thank you. On May 3rd, 2022, we opened the bids for the 2022 Road Improvements Project. Glasgow is the lowest apparent bidder in the amount that you mentioned. And then also, you'll see in the packet that there's a change order to reduce the scope with a total contract amount of due to the rising fuel costs and based on asphalt being a petroleum-based product, the bids did come in high. So we were able to remove from the scope some of the roads to get that down to what had been budgeted. So we're recommending award in the amount mentioned to Glasgow Incorporated.
So the net award is 1.3 million?
Yes, and then the change order will bring the total down to the budgeted amount.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for a sign in the ultimate right-of-way at 4060 Butler Pike?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This is a hold harmless at a development, a three-building development on Butler Pike just below the White Marsh Coliseum site. There are two main buildings and a small historic building in the front. This sign is for the building in the back that has several eye doctors and specialists in them. And what they're proposing to do is replace this existing sign that you see on the top with the sign that you see on the bottom. The difference besides design is that they have moved it closer to the road for better visibility of the sign. Krista has done a site analysis. You have a memo in your packet indicating that this does not create any site systems issues, and therefore, we're recommending that the hold harmless agreement be approved.
Thanks. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release, #1, for Robbins Gulf Holdings LLC, 27 East Germantown Pike in the amount of $18,106.25?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Thank you. This is for 27 East Germantown Pike. It's the small building close to Butler and Germantown that the applicant is rehabbing and building a small parking lot. And this partial release is actually to correct an overage of the amount that they had escrowed. So there's no physical improvement that it's tied with, but to correct that overage that they had escrowed. They recently started, I believe, just last week.
Okay.
What should the amount have been?
The total amount should have been $199,168.75, and they double-escrowed the 10% legal and engineering.
Okay, so this release would get it to the 199?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,445,367.62 and payroll totaling $1,066,025.89, pension paid costs totaling $5,366.78 for April 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Felt like Laura there for a second, tripping over to decimal points. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the renovation and addition of office use at 27 East Germantown Pike?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This is another development that you are familiar with and that you just released an escrow for. The board approved this land development last September. It's in the historic district, and as a result, they are getting ready to start to make the improvements which involve renovation to the front existing building that faces Germantown Pike and adding a new addition of a little over 800 square feet for office use. Just to give you a refresher, this is the plan. This is the existing building to be renovated, and this is the addition to be added. This was in front of Harb previously for informal review and yesterday at the meeting on May 11th for a formal review of their project because they've submitted a building permit. And Harb talked about several little details which they are willing to modify, but overall, we're pleased with it, so no issues, and recommended a certificate of appropriateness.
Thanks, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 7111 Sheaf Lane versus Monco Board of Assessment Appeals resulting in the decrease assessment for 2021 requiring a repayment of $12,559.82? for 2021, requiring a repayment of $12,559.83 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, Supervisor McCusker. I know this was discussed briefly in executive session as well, and as you know, the Board of, the Board of Supervisors is a party to all assessment appeals, as well as the county and the school district. The school district usually takes the lead on these because they have the biggest, biggest tax burden, and they fund the experts and the litigation involved. There was an appeal taken by the taxpayer in this matter. This, it's been settled and signed off by the school district already, and to send my law for, if the Board of Supervisors was so inclined, to go ahead and send my law firm to do it, you have to hire an expert, you have to pay us to go ahead and do it. Our office has reviewed what happened related to this assessment appeal, is in agreement with the settlement from the school district, so we're recommending approval this evening.
All right, thanks, Sean. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 835 Bethlehem Pike versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the increase assessment for 2022, requiring a payment of $639.86 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Supervisor McCusker, much the same as I just said previously related to this, except here, what happened is the school district took the appeal, and they came to a settlement with the property owner, which is having a refund both to the Colonial School District and to White Marsh Township.
Thanks, Sean. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the solicitor appearance before the zoning hearing board to represent the zoning officer in ZHB number 2020-20, Harnor Realty Zoning Violation Appeal?
So moved.
Second.
Great.
Supervisor McCusker, we have a longstanding zoning violation that was written by our zoning officer, Mr. Guttenplan. This has been continued numerous times throughout the course of almost two years at the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board recently indicated they were no longer going to continue this appeal of the violation notice, and it would be heard before our next board meeting. In an effort to have representation for our zoning officer, we're recommending that the solicitor go there to represent the zoning officer in this appeal case. We are hopeful there has been talks of a settlement. It seems the property owner would like to settle it, but to date, it hasn't been settled, and at this time, the zoning hearing board would like to move it along, so to speak, hear the case, and hopefully resolve the matter at their, I guess, June, at a June meeting, which would be in advance of our next board meeting. So that's why it's before you to authorize the solicitor to represent the zoning officer in this appeal.
Okay.
It's currently scheduled for June 8th, the day before your next meeting.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Charlie. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to the public comment period. Any public comment?
I have, I have.
Sir, you need to, you need to come up. And give us your name.
It has nothing to do with.
And your, and your, and your name and address?
Frank Rigger.
Okay, and your address?
633 Ridge Pike, Lafayette Hill.
Thank you.
My neighbor's tree fell through their fence onto my property. Boom, they left it there.
Okay.
They refused to move it, move it. And then they put a new fence up, and then they used the tree to hold their new fence up.
All right. We're going to let Rick.
These are always very challenging issues when neighbors aren't neighborly and.
Well, they hid from me for eight months.
And do the right thing, unfortunately, because when you get between two neighbors, it is a civil matter between two neighbors. It is not a township or code-compliant matter. Unfortunately, that would be something, we always recommend that the neighbors try and speak to one another. We know that, you know, unfortunately, at times, that's not always the case, but in, in a case of a tree falling on another neighbor's property, if they don't clean it up, there's no code to cite for that. That would be something that's a civil matter that you could take them to small claims court for.
How come the township, like, I have friends in other townships. They actually have a law that falls on your, my tree falls on your yard, I gotta fix it up. Philadelphia has that law. What is the township? I missed.
Well, that, that is, in this township and every township, we, we feel for your situation, sir, but that's really between you and your neighbor. It's really not a township incident.
It took me eight months. I had to put a sign up, bad neighbor, remove your tree. They took some of it, but what about the fence? It's backwards, and they're using the tree on my property to hold their fence up.
I, I know this is, you know, a different, you know, not the answer you want to, want to hear.
Can I, can I kick it down? I mean, not the fence, the support.
Well, anything that's on your property, what we would advise, anything that's on your property is fair game for you to address, fix, repair, remove, as long as it's on your property. Anything, you know, even if a branch from a tree that isn't on, your tree comes over onto your property, as long as it's cut back to the property line, that is something that you're permitted to do, it's on your property. But if it's on their property, you don't want to touch anything that's on their property.
What they did was, after some things, they left a 10-foot piece that weighs like maybe a ton, cut everything else and took it.
Right.
You know, and put a new fence up. Since it's their tree, and I get a phone in later, and I put it on their property, since it's their tree, not mine.
It's just going to create more and more issues.
It doesn't matter, I really don't care. It's going to be their problem then.
That, that's really between you and your neighbor. I mean, you know, we certainly.
Well, they keep hiding from me.
You know what we could do? We could talk, let me get through the rest of the agenda, we could talk after we close the meeting.
I'm going home, I, I got.
Two seconds.
Yeah, even if we, even if we try and talk to your neighbor and maybe ask them, maybe they'll, you know, comply with it, but you know.
See, you know, I talked to Judge, whatever, damn near, what the hell's his name?
Lukens.
Judge Lukens. I could pay 80 bucks. I don't have the 80 bucks to spare. And they would go and serve her papers and say, move it. And then I could take her to court and get the 80 bucks back, but then I don't have the 80 dollars.
We, we can certainly afterwards, if there's something that we can maybe talk to the neighbor, but, you know, I, I think what we're.
They put a curtain up, so they see me come outside, they jump in their car and lock the door.
I'm sorry to hear about that. It's a shame.
This is the fourth tree.
Yeah.
So the other three fell on my neighbor's property, and they weren't too happy with that. That, that took a while to clean up, too, but this was a big tree, wasn't. It's, it's like something I need a chainsaw that day. But, oh, well, it's.
If you have a second, we'll talk right after we're done. We're almost done.
Oh, all right. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Any board comment? All right, I'd like to announce that we had executive meeting where we discussed litigation in real estate. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Good night, White Marsh.
Good night, everybody.